I call this meeting to order. Please silence your electronic devices, cell phones and whatnot so we can conduct business and stand for the implication and join me in the Lord's prayer. Our Father.
Lord of heaven.
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. It is not just temptation but deliver us from evil. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Communications?
Yes, the Batavia Brewing Company and Eli Fish Brewing Company submitted their application for Oktoberfest on Saturday, September 18th at 4:00 PM in Jackson Square with food, drinks and live music.
Anyone have any questions or concerns on that? Okay.
That was all I had.
I also added on communications and I think I emailed all of us so you knew this was going to be here, that Disc Golf communications, I've received several emails on it, I know you have as well. I don't know what the misunderstanding was. Last we knew, the gentleman came here and said he had more information. We asked him to turn it over to Rachel. City manager was going to look into it. By design, this is what we do for all requests, all projects. They go through the city hall vetting process, which starts with the city manager and usually involves police, fire, public works, everyone to make sure that this is a good fit for the city, as well as it's spaced over several meetings so that there's plenty of opportunity for public to weigh in and make comments and nothing is by surprise, nothing is rammed through, nothing is done without public support and input. And sometimes these things go well and sometimes people have concerns. In this particular case, there were several concerns. So the reason I put this on here was for council to weigh in and I would like to make a request that we direct the city manager before, as far as I know, this process hasn't even started. She hasn't even had time to really delve into this yet, maybe scratch the surface. But at least before this even goes any farther, I'd like to take Centennial Park off the list for this. I just don't think it's even a partial fit. It just doesn't going to work. So if we could direct the city manager to remove that right off the bat and not have and not have that even be a consideration, if that's okay with you guys. If you want to weigh in on some of the emails you got.
Absolutely.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we're all in consensus to do that?
Yes.
And the gentleman who was interested in coming up with a plan for Disc Golf completely understands and does not want to pursue Centennial Park as well. There may or may not be a fit at another park depending on, again, we haven't had even a departmental review of the proposed area yet. We're still waiting on information from the gentleman who's interested in Disc Golf.
So we may not have parks big enough even in the city, but if that's the case, we'll work with our partners in the county and maybe surrounding towns and villages. Maybe they'll want to jump in, maybe they have a perfect place for it and it's still within a reasonable drive of Batavia residents and they can partake in that golf. It'll still be within the county at least. But I mean, we don't even know, we haven't even looked into it yet. So just, I know that's why a lot of you are here. I heard you loud and clear and we were already emailing the city manager to like, you know, is Centennial Park even being considered? Take that off. I mean, so if we're all good with that, we've directed her to, it's, we're not even going to consider it at this point for Centennial Park.
Yeah, I made one phone call and that went to five and I obtained a lot of information. I shared it with Ray this afternoon so to assist him because I know the quest he's up against and there was a lot of good stuff there. Oh, I just saw people walk by and throw a frisbee at a basket and I found out there's a lot to it. But I did talk to the director of all the Western New York State Parks and he shared a lot of information. Ray has it all now, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Can move forward with that.
Okay.
And just so you know, the whole process, at least the way my experience on city council has been, the whole process is designed around public input. We're constantly asking for help and we have tough decisions to make. We make it very public, you know, please weigh in and we, you know, rarely will I support taking something from a conference meeting and moving it right that fast to vote on it that night. We rarely have ever done that, only for grant approvals and various things that were time sensitive, but never for the use of a park or a major decision involving a large expenditure of money or things like that. It's always a several week process to make sure we get your input because we work for you and I want to know what you guys think, so it helps me make that vote and make that decision.
I'd like the record to show that I don't even want Farrell Park considered for this in case it comes up.
Yeah, let it go through its process and we can discuss it if it even gets there. All right, so we're done with that. Any other questions on that?
Gino, I just want to make a comment. First of all, Centennial Park being in my ward, I always kid all you guys because I have a very quiet ward. My constituents usually don't have any complaints at all and my phone and my email were on fire and have been. So I just wanted to say to the third ward residence, thank you very much for weighing in on it. It was good to hear from some of you and talk to you and it was good to see your emails. I really appreciate that type of feedback. I had a feeling that that would be the feedback if Centennial Park was going to be considered. The one thing I want to say is the gentleman that is pursuing this and proposing this, I think is a very upstanding guy and I really appreciate him listening to the residents as well. He heard you loud and clear and he decided to pull it right off the table because he obviously wants to be a good neighbor and a good citizen as well and do what everybody else would like to do in the area. So I just want to commend him for realizing it wasn't a popular choice and pulling it immediately off the table as well. I look forward to working with him. I hope that we can do something in the city. I hope we can find a spot for him.
All right, are we good? Okay, moving on. Next city council conference and business meeting will be held Monday, August 9th, 7:00 PM, City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. And today we have a public hearing to provide information to the public on the Community Development Block Grant Program. So what we'll do is I will open the public hearing and then Rachel's going to give a brief update on what it's all about and then we'll go from there. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Mr. Biakowski, seconded by Mr. McGinnis. If you would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Biakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Lucino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Karaz.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Rachel, if you would just give a brief overview?
Thank you, Council President. The Community Development Block Grant in partnership with New York State Department of State is offering for economic development and infrastructure projects grant funding. The city of Batavia is eligible to apply and the city would like to apply for infrastructure grant to upgrade water lines on Jackson Street. The estimated cost of the project is $1.36 million. Tonight's public hearing is in reference to this project and for further detail, I can certainly read more. It's a four inch line from Ellicott to South Jackson and a six inch line between Watson and South Jackson that would then be redone to have a whole eight inch water line there and water main for that street. We'd look to also do street and sidewalk improvements at the same time if we were to get this grant for the water line improvement.
So as I understand it, this is necessary step so that if we, after we have this public hearing, then later on today, we will talk about the grant itself, the actual application for the grant and that will get moved to tonight's business meeting to then be voted on.
To apply for the grant, yes.
So this has been, you talked about it the last meeting and the meeting before, so we're talking six weeks now into this, so this will be the final step to get the grant application start. Okay, anyone, okay, anyone like to speak on the water upgrades grant? Okay.
I'd just like to make a comment. It's pretty timely because today I was questioned about census numbers and the population of Batavia and I said they'll probably start increasing again because of all the complexes being built, the one over on East Main that's going up and all that. And then the individual asked me about infrastructure to support it and I said bingo, we're increasing the size of the water lines and we will have the infrastructure, so.
Yeah.
This is a good thing. I mean, without the infrastructure, we're going to have a lot of problems.
Right, and that's a great point. Currently, myself and Ray Tor are working on redoing and enhancing our capital improvement plans around water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure and both plants. When that is finalized in the fall, we will present that to city council as well. And as a reminder, that'll help determine what the rates are to customers as well so we can keep up with the infrastructure we have. But grants like this help keep the rates down for homeowners.
Right. Anyone else? Okay, motion to close public hearing? Mr. Karaz, seconded by Mr. Canelli. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Karaz.
Yes.
Biakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Lucino.
Yes.
Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Public comments. Each speaker will have signed up advance with the city clerk. Each speaker will please use the podium there. Please state your name and address before giving your statement. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Please address your comments to the chair. Council will not engage in debate with the speaker. On your first bell, that means you have 30 seconds left, please wrap it up because on the second bell, I'm going to have to stop you so that others will have a chance to speak. Who's the first person?
Carl DeLuca.
Hello, all you folks. The person, the reason that we're here today basically for most of us is to address the issue that you've already said you've taken off the table. So maybe my comments are going to be a little bit redundant, but I still think you as a city council should know that the reason why all of us were here is because we first had indications of Centennial Park being used and so we got on the bandwagon right away. Whether or not that caused all of you to decide that Centennial Park is off the books or not, I don't really know. But I do have a few comments I'd like to address to the city council. Of course, Centennial Park established with the New York State School for the Blind around 1869, a pristine, hilly, well-forced park in a residential setting adjacent to three heavily trafficked roads and one smaller street. It's free to be used by the public for a variety of outdoor activities and is used by walkers, joggers, track and cross-country teams, yoga, sledding, bird watchers, et cetera. It's been the signature locale to the annual Fourth of July picnic, 5K road races, concerts, and it even hosted the Buffalo Philharmonic. The proposed Disc Golf would occupy two-thirds of the community's 14-acre park, restricting activities that are now available to all. Those who have now had the freedom to choose the activity, they would now be restricted to the use of just one-third of the park's area. The proposed installation of Disc Golf would be a permanent impediment to the freedom of use for the general community. The tragedy resulting in the loss of this public park area will occur when the Disc Golf players do not take into account that their use detracts and limits others' use and enjoyment of the park. The problem occurs when people must share the same resource without well-defined property rights. The proposed golf game uses hardened plastic discs with dense, narrow edges that can spin anywhere from 30 to 70 miles an hour. Courses across the country have been closed for a variety of reasons. One is the negative impact on the environment, which affects bird life, increased soil erosion and compaction, trampling of undergrowth and vegetation, and damage from nicked bark, leaf and branch strippings, which can result in tree death. Additional negative impacts can result, which include excessive car parking, noise, tournaments drawing crowds, also of importance, city budget council restraints. This could mean that taxpayers will be unfairly burdened by paying for potential damages caused by a few. The reality is that the proposed Disc Golf course would require over nine acres of public land dedicated only to a single purpose. Experience in other communities has shown that once a course is installed, players come to consider the course as their own despite proclaiming to share it with the existing park users. It's unlikely that a person would want to walk around an open space with hard plastic projectiles flying around, just as no one would want to if they were permitted anyway to stroll through a regular golf course. In Pisah County, New Jersey in 2017, petitioners voted 3,087 against 119 for the installation of a Disc Golf course. You can see this in Six Ways to Kill a Disc Golf Course and One Way to Stop It dated February 22nd, 2018 by Josh Wood in Parked, a nonprofit blog created in 2016. In a letter written to the Buffalo News on the February 26th, 2020, the writer states that Disc Golf was allowed to overtake Pine Woods Park in North Tonawanda. Their city officials approved this course without conducting a formal environmental assessment or seeking public opinion. The letter goes on to say that Park must provide a safe environment for all to enjoy, not a small select group. The following information is from an economic study of the Richmond Hill Disc Golf Course by Haley Mahoney, Department of Economics at the University of North Carolina Asheville. It was dated March 3rd, 2014. Disc Golf Democrat, excuse me, Disc Golf demographics and characteristics taken from 73 players in Asheville. Their average age was 20 to 35. The percentage were males, 85.9%. The mode of transportation that they got to the course was by car, 97.2%. Those concerned about the environmental impact, 44.9%. Average number of days played per year, 122. Finally, in an article dated March 13th, 2013 by Ken McGary, a member of the Save McLaren Park Committee in San Francisco, he notes that a Disc Golf course that was installed in 2003 in Golden Gate State Park was recommended to be removed two years later by the Division of Urban Forestry due to tree damage. I ask that the council members look with foresight to the negative impact that this proposed installation would have on our community. Thanks.
Linda Davio.
Hi, my name's Linda Davio and I live at 16 Park Avenue with my husband, Brian. Our family has had the good fortune to live on Park Avenue for over 40 years. It's been a wonderful place to raise our daughters and now enjoy our retirement. Although we don't use the park as much ourselves anymore, we really do enjoy seeing it being enjoyed by many others. I really want to thank city council for all you do for Batavia. When I emailed all of you and the city manager, I really didn't expect to hear from so many of you and I was impressed. I received thoughtful responses from you, which served to allay my concerns that no one was listening. You are and it is much appreciated. This is not to say you wouldn't have decided that Centennial Park should remain as it is without hearing from so many citizens. Keeping Centennial Park as a green space is important and is evidenced by your many kind replies. You have heard us and you agree. I was going to share with you a very broad history of the park from 1866 when New York State decided that the handicapped of the state needed specialized education and created institutions to educate the blind and the deaf, as well as hospitals for the mentally ill. Ultimately, through the work and influence of Dean Richmond, Batavia was chosen for the location of an institute for the blind and eventually what was then known as State Park was created from land purchased and donated to the state by citizens of the Village of Batavia for use of what we now know as the New York State School for the Blind. That's my short version. It's been over 40 years for us and we still enjoy seeing people enjoy the park. I sent all of you in my emails, a list of things that were very important uses for the park, so I'm not going to repeat myself again. The face of the park is great the way it is. Again, thank you to all of you for what you do for the city of Batavia and what you do for the citizens of Batavia and thank you for looking out for Centennial Park. It really makes a difference. Thank you.
Judy Sikora.
My name is Judy Sikora and I live at 32 Park Avenue and I've lived in Batavia for 46 years, since moving here from Buffalo to work as librarian and library director at GCC for 36 years. And I'd like to address the Disc Golf in Centennial Park. We have all become experts doing the research for this. But I would like to echo Linda's comments. I would like to begin by thanking every member of this council, all nine of you, along with Rachel, for you have, you've been very busy this past week and I know you've spent many hours reading, talking to us on the phone, responding to emails. I know Rachel was supposed to be on vacation and, you know, and again, as Linda said, your responses were very thoughtful and it's really, really much appreciated. You're doing a good job. And I, you know, I wasn't anticipating really being listened to the way I feel that I have been, so thank you. I have a couple of comments. I know we're repeating some things, but I think you're getting the impression, and I'd like to ask the people that are here supporting Centennial Park, if you would just stand up so you can see how many of us are here. Thank you. We've done a lot of work and one thing that we've done is we've done a petition and I'd like to enter that into the minutes. We have about 150 signatures. We slowed down once we had a sense that you were taking it off the table, so there could be more. Okay, so in a nutshell, my request is to keep it, and even though you're not doing it now, this is, if you would keep it in mind for the future, because we love that park, we use that park. In a nutshell, if you could keep the entire park free and open for use by all. And the other thing is keep the park safe. I'm a daily user of the park and it's the only park that we have in the city retaining the natural quality that it does and I think you all know what I mean. It's simply grass and trees and a lovely rolling terrain. It's very simple. It's very simple. Centennial Park was a lifesaver for many of us, especially many of us here tonight during COVID. Just walking through has been, it's restorative, it's peaceful, it's, it really is a treasure. That park, I think many cities would be envious of Centennial Park and we have it. It's there and we don't have to do anything. So I would like to ask, please do not change the nature of what makes it unique. I like to be positive, so I'd like to state my position in a positive way. I'm in favor of maintaining freedom of use by all citizens of the entire park and not restricting it to two-thirds of the park with a permanent Disc Golf course. I'm also in favor of a safe environment for all park users. This is in keeping with your own vision statement, which says, quote, "Our community members will enjoy the feeling of safety as they live, work and interact in our city." And as others point out, you're not permitted to walk through a regular golf course for fear of getting hit by a stray golf ball and a flying disc is at least as dangerous. And you can Google spectator Disc Golf injuries to learn more. So concluding, in order to be safe and not restrict the freedom of others, I think that Phil's proposed golf course needs to be a dedicated course located in a non-residential area with adequate parking where the course would not restrict use by others. And Centennial Park clearly does not meet these conditions. I also, I've met Phil, he is a fine person. I told him I could adopt him. He really, he's bright, intelligent, full of energy, enthusiastic. So we're not here to oppose Disc Golf. What we're here is to support a park that we love. So an ending, I would like to ask all of you, please keep Centennial Park the unique green space that it is and thank you. Thank you for all the work that you do. And I'd also like to put in a word of thanks for the groundskeepers of our parks. I know, I'm right in front of Centennial Park. They do an amazing job, so if someone could convey that to them, that thanks, I would appreciate it.
Sitting right behind you. Ray would be the gentleman you talked to.
Oh, Ray, where is Ray? Yes, Ray.
I will make sure the voice.
Oh, Ray, I've heard of you. Thank you. They do a great job and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Judy DeLuca.
Your positive response has caused me to edit my speech, so I'm just going to hit a few high points. I do have a master's degree in health and stress management, so I was taking the point of view of green space and health. I looked at your mission statement, so I'm grateful that it caused me to do that. And as Judy said before, it's very positive in the sense that you care about the health of our community. So I did look up some articles and I won't burden you with all of them, but just one, I'd like to give you some information. The National Recreation and Park Association reports that the use of green space is associated with decreased health complaints, improved blood pressure and cholesterol levels, reduce stress, improve general health perceptions and greater ability to face problems. So there's no question about it that having a park is a really healthy thing for the community. The other article that I thought was very relevant was from the National Institute of Health and the article was titled Urban Green Space Use During Time of Stress, A Case Study During the COVID-19 Pandemic. It states, "We conclude that increased use of urban green space during moments of stress, such as the COVID-19 pandemic, has the potential to ameliorate some of the negative effects of the stressor. Sufficient urban green space provision for all sections of society will maximize the opportunity to employ a nature-based mechanism during times of personal and community stress." There's so many articles on the connection of health and green space. So I'm so glad our community has a beautiful green space that we can all use to stay healthy. So that's my article in a nutshell. Really, what the research shows is that policymakers, which you are, should take the amount of green space in the living environment into account when endeavoring to improve the health situation of elderly, youth and all segments of society. So thank you and thank you for taking Centennial Park off the possibilities.
Karen Vassar.
Hello, my name's Karen Vassar. I live at 15 Lincoln Avenue in Batavia. My family has lived on there for 67 years, plus, I'm only 67 by the way, so is my parents. But I grew up there. I played out in the park when I was a kid. You know, we would play ball in the park, we would sled in the winter times. We did everything. I participated in a few of the July 4th picnics in the parks as an artist for the Glow Corporate Challenge. I was cleanup crew with my company that sponsored a bunch of people there and we love this park. It deserves to be as pristine as it is today and we just need to keep it that way. So thank you for taking it off the table. We really do appreciate it and I will tell all my neighbors what's going on and thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Teresa Smart. I think she left. Bill Moon.
Bill Moon.
I'll decline everything that I wanted to say about. Thanks for listening.
John Roach.
John Roach, one sixteen grand view. I've got nothing to say about Centennial. I did have two questions. When Matt Worth was still here, he had said that he had been able to get money to repave Richmond and Harvester. I think it was like a million each. And do we still have that money? Does the state take it back, or is that project still moving forward?
Yes, the project is still moving forward.
Then the other question I have is with the Brisbane Building, obviously, you're going to build that new police station. The Brisbane building will be vacant. And you're going to talk about looking for grant money to see what to do with it. I was wondering if anybody's talking to the county, because our governor has decided the county, whether it wants to or not, will get a new jail, leaving that old jail vacant. Maybe the county's got a plan for it, but if they don't, it's an adjoining parcel. If they want to get rid of theirs, like the city's going to want to do something with Brisbane, you might get a better deal as a combined parcel. You might want to find out what they're going to do, and that could have an impact on what you end up doing with the Brisbane Building. Thank you.
Counsel response?
I'd like to respond.
Go ahead.
Mr. Roach, the disc golf is going in your backyard.
Good location, John.
Oh, good location.
Right next to the cemetery.
Should have spoke up.
Rachel, if I'm not mistaken, Richmond and Harvester are scheduled next year, twenty-three?
Yep, I'll let Ray answer when construction will start, but it's under design now.
It's under design right now. We are currently scheduled for next construction season, next year.
Okay.
Twenty-twenty-two is the year.
Yeah, that's I mean, when we've got the grant, it was two years out when we got the notice, and it seemed like an eternity. And I know it's a rough road, and we need to get it fixed, but it's moving as fast as it can. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just like I'd like to thank everyone for showing up. We don't know a lot of things unless we get feedback what the community wants. For once, the community gave us some good feedback, and so many times we've all heard it after the fact, somebody comes up and says, well, I didn't know anything about this. Well, if you stay attuned to municipal events, local events, you'll know and speak up. It's the best thing you can do. Thank you.
I'm just confused, because we never talked about it here. Somehow the info got out from the people that wanted to make the proposal. They jumped the gun and made some kind of insinuation that maybe we were on board. We weren't even it's not even a plan to discuss yet. It's still in the check out and see if it's even a possibility stage. And we weren't even nobody was talking names and addresses of parks or anything that I remember. It was just I think he might have mentioned it as a possible he loved Centennial Park, but we weren't even.
There was an article.
There was a he mentioned Centennial when he came to.
Yeah, because I don't remember us talking about any park. We were basically talking to you to get it. But thank you. Sorry you had to get so worked up, but your neighborhood got to know each other, and you reacquainted with everyone, and you had a common goal, and that's not a bad thing. That's a very good thing. So hopefully you can build on.
And I met a lot of my constituents, too.
Right. Hopefully you can build on that and be like other neighborhoods and maybe get together and do more things other than, you know, worry about the park, maybe improve the park or give some suggestions we could do some good things there. So it's on you guys. So whatever you need, just let us know. Moving on to the block grant consolidated funding application.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So we had the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Funding Application for Jackson Street Water, and I'm asking for council to approve this this evening and move it to the business agenda tonight.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Jackson Street, yes.
I think we've got the full brief on that a couple of meetings ago. So if anybody has any additional questions. Okay, so we in consensus to move that to tonight's? Okay, that gets moved. The ordinance change for the we're going to schedule the public hearing for that. That'll be we'll make that resolution tonight to schedule that public hearing, correct?
Correct.
You want to brief us on that real quick?
Yes, thank you, Council President. We discussed this before, that two-eleven and two-eleven and a half was referred to the Planning and Development Committee for review and recommendation. This is two-eleven, two-eleven and a half, East Main Street, where the YMCA will be locating. Currently, it's a P-two, and it needs to be rezoned for a three C-three for their operations there. Originally, council saw it as only two-eleven, and after the review, the YMCA determined they would be going over a property boundary. So it's coming back to you with both two-eleven, two-eleven and a half, asking for you to set a public hearing. The letter from the Planning and Development Chair is included with their approval, and I also got word that the county planning committee also approved it with no comments the other night.
So this would be we'd be scheduling the public hearing if we move this tonight. We will vote on it tonight to schedule the public hearing for August ninth.
That's correct.
At seven o'clock, which is, I believe, our regular is during our regular business meeting or one of our meetings. Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting for scheduling? Okay, that gets moved. The next one is the budget amendment for the DWI grants.
Yep, I'll speak to the budget amendment. And if you have any specific questions to police operations, I'll have Assistant Police Chief Camp come up and answer those. But the city was awarded thirty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars from the Genesee County Stop DWI Program for specialized patrols targeting drug and alcohol impaired drivers. We'd like to amend the budget to reflect the awarding of this grant.
And this basically it's required that we do that, and then we accept it officially. So any questions or concerns on that? Okay, we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting so that we can get that grant started? Okay, that gets moved. And then there is a similar one, an additional one that came through in the meantime for twenty-four hundred dollars.
That's correct. It's my understanding that after they reviewed their budget from earlier in the year, there was an additional two thousand four hundred dollars that the Assistant County Manager has has asked the city if they could utilize, and of course, we can. So we need to make a second budget amendment for that.
So this is pretty much the same thing for a smaller amount, but it's going to go towards a good cause to get additional enforcement. Any questions or concerns on that? So we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting so that we can get that resolved? Okay, that gets moved. And the technical assistant grant application, the Brisbane Mansion, it brought up by one of our comments, did you want to cover that?
Yep, and I'll also cover the comment. I think it's a great idea to speak with the county and understand their plans. The front of the jail is certainly an amazing historic building that I'd hope would be preserved in the county through their transition, but I believe it hosts Genesee justice, and I don't want to speak for the county, and I'm not sure their actual planning. So I can't speak to that, John, but it's certainly something we can look at. I don't know if our timelines are going to be on the same path, but again, certainly something to look into. The Brisbane Mansion, currently where we house our police force, as everyone knows, is dated. Operations are very difficult. There's no ADA accessibility, and there's there's several problems with the layout and how our police force has to conduct its business on a day-to-day basis. We went over the presentation two meetings ago. We looked at the timeline. The city's been wanting to address this for over twenty years, and we've come forward with a proposal and a feasibility study to use the parking lot at Elva and Bank Street. While doing so, I know it's important that we find a reuse for that building. At this time, the city has no plans or needs no office space where we would look to relocate city staff into that building. So we'd like to pursue a path where we put it out for RFP to a developer to take that on and bring it on to the tax rolls. To do that in the best manner possible, you want to make your property attractive to the marketplace. And by understanding all the historical elements inside the building and having technical assistance reports done of the structure itself and the historical elements, it will be that much further along for a developer that may want to apply for historic tax credits or different grants to preserve the building. I think it is city council's wish, and I know it's certainly the wish of many of our community, to preserve that building as a historical element in our downtown. So this would this is actually the Batavia Development Corporation willing to apply for this grant. And if awarded, we would go ahead and do that study. So we had a plan to reuse reuse the building at the time we moved the police department.
So basically, the resolution is supporting their application for the.
Correct. And it needs municipal support to move forward.
Bob?
Yeah. What exact what exactly does it have for a historical classification? Is it a historical landmark?
I don't know that for sure. Larry, are you here? It's not designated a historical landmark, correct?
I believe it's not.
But it has elements of it that it could be so similar to the first downtown building we had designated was the brewery at Eli Fish that retained historical elements of it to get these tax credits. A developer would go through that same process and have it designated, and then SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office, would oversee the work they do there to ensure that they maintain elements. We would find out during this technical assistance grant, does it have enough elements to still qualify as a historical property and then be, we'll call it, listed? Yep.
That's probably one of the main things we're going to identify with this with this.
Is there enough left of the character to designate it as historical?
We'll get right down to the nuts and bolts of what we have and what we should be trying to preserve and whatnot from this, I would hope, from this grant. That's my thought on it.
And then it may qualify as for further grants.
That's correct. The Main Street grant is what this sets this up for. Currently, the city's been successful in getting Main Street acre grants to the Eli Fish Building and the Theater Fifty-Six here as well. So it really.
This is the time to do it. Instead of waiting when we're in the middle of construction or something like that, and there's a lot going on, now's the time to get this stuff taken care of so we know going into it, we have a place for the old building going into a new.
Correct.
So I think it's a perfect timing to start talking about it. Any other questions or concerns on that? So we'll be moving this resolution to support their application for this grant to tonight's business meeting. So that is consensus. We'll move that over. And then this last thing is just more of an informational thing on the roof.
Yep, so.
It's not getting moved anywhere. That's just an information.
It will not move tonight. It is the resolution that is needed to award the bids for the police station flat roof replacement. It has not gone out to bid yet. The bid packages are not done, but we wanted to bring it forward at a conference meeting so it could then get on a later business meeting. As we talked about in the previous meetings, the prices of the market are very volatile. So the quicker we move things forward, the better. So we just wanted to bring that forward tonight. If you have any specific questions on the roof repairs, Ray is certainly here to answer those.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, so motion to adjourn. Mr. Canelli, seconded by Ms. Christian. Call the robe, please.
Councilmember Canelli.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Christian.
Yes.
Karas.
Yes.
Bayakowski.
Yes.
Piscino.
Yes.
Okay, if you guys want to stay, fine. If not, I can give us a few minutes so you guys can get back home, and we'll continue on with the business meeting after you guys are able to.
And the guy escapes. He's in our mall. He's coming down the escalator.
No way.
You're seeing all these wonderful stores. My husband and I are sitting, and we're at the roof, you know, where's that? It was it really was funny, because obviously, they had not done their research, and they just were using the names.
Oh.
You know, Batavia.
Was it for real?
No, God, no. It was just a, you know, a show that's on. But it was so funny that they came to Batavia, and they were coming down the escalator of our malls.
That's funny.
I know, it really was.
Okay, are we ready to start the business?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. I called to order the business meeting. You've all. I called to order the business meeting. You've all seen the main financials. If you will have any comments or concerns about them? Okay, we approve those. You've had the June twenty-twenty-one minutes sent to you. Been able to read those over. Any omissions or corrections you'd like to make? So we're in consensus to approve those. Agenda items, fifty-three, twenty-twenty-one, the Community Development Block Grant for Jackson Street. Ms. Briggs. Fifty-four, twenty-one, the chapter amending the zoning for the two-eleven. Fifty-five, twenty-one, the police department budget for the receipt of the thirty-two thousand nine eighty-one. Ms. McGinnis. And the fifty-six, twenty-one, for the lesser amount of twenty-four hundred for the same type of grant. Ms. Canelli. And the technical assistant grant for the Brisbane Mansion, fifty-seven, twenty-twenty-one. Ms. Piscino. City attorneys report.
Council President, members of council, since we reported on last, we worked on a variety of matters across the spectrum, ranging from general municipal matters to counseling various staff and apartment heads, to handling real estate and contract matters, consulting on major agreements. One area that's been fairly quiet, I would say, just as an update, is code enforcement. As I reported on previously, the code enforcement docket is not going to be put back on by the state courts. We continue to stay in touch with the courts to see when they will be scheduled. That is not being controlled by the local city court, but it is being controlled as far as Buffalo by the district administrative courts. Unfortunately, it seems as though that is on the same pace as the foreclosure cases, the eviction cases, which seem to have been stalled due to the COVID pandemic. So we're doing everything we can to try to keep those matters moving through Department of Public Courts and Code Office. We can never be sure of court appearances, but at this particular point, we don't have access to the courts for those matters.
Any questions for the city attorney? Okay, city managers report.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Council President. Be happy to report that the Assistant City Manager, Jill Wedrick, will be starting on July twenty-first. July twenty-first is also another big day because the Severino Project should be closing with the BDC and the IDA on that day as well. The BDC, as you've heard, the Andrew McGuire has left to pursue a career with the town of Batavia. So the BDC is in the process of looking for a new director at this time. So I'll be working with them to help in that regard. And we still are advertising and seeking candidates for the Director of Public Works position.
Any questions for the city mayor? Thank you, Rachel. Committee reports.
The Sixth Ward met this evening at five-thirty, the Committee for the Leadership, and we had some reports still on Oda Street. And code enforcement is taking care of some of the violations and through that area. Ross Street and Swan Street was brought up because this the third accident there within the last six months. Jackson School Parking Lot, Ray Tort, is taking care of it so they can handle the no parking signs and possibly a direction towards the back so people could park there. Rachel, the fire chief, the lieutenant of the police, and Ray Tort from DPW were all in attendance, and seven people, and they really work well. Thank you very much. Thank you. They work well with the people from the Sixth Ward, and we're continuing on, and we have more people joining every month. Thank you.
Not a normal committee, but because we sometimes give them money. Robert had asked about Go Art, how they're coming. So I would like to say Go Art is open and well, and we'll be reopening the tavern, which is much of their income. So, yes, it'll be open on Wednesday through Saturdays very soon. There's their fundraiser.
I talked to him at the Redfield Park dedication, and he said they're displaying Kathy Owen's artwork right now.
Yes.
So if you want to see that, it's down there at the Go Art. And they're wide they're open for business.
Things are happening.
Go ahead.
Can I say one more thing? The Community Night Out hosted by our police department will be on Tuesday, August tenth, at St. Anthony's. We've had a tremendous response with, I think, three individuals pledging more than a thousand dollars or three groups to support the event this year. So Detective Wojo, who's here, is actually in charge of that. So if you have anything to say, I'll let you add it.
Oh, it's going very well. We're really excited for the event. The whole event is aimed at building police-community relations. Batavia Downs has stepped up, given us a diamond sponsorship, Western New York Heroes as well. So we have a couple very good sponsors. It's going to be at St. Anthony's. It's going to be a great event, give a lot of participation. participation.
And I also understand that you guys are having a ballgame after the Muck Tugs game. You're playing some kind of, are you throwing out the first pitch? I would tell you what they told me, "Don't suck." Because everyone will be watching. The pressure's on.
I'm really afraid to throw in the dirt, but if I do, I.
I, I did a lot of, I did a lot of practice.
I'm practicing a little bit.
It's a good idea.
There's actually, to clear that up, there's a couple of different events. July 15 is Stop DWI Night.
Right.
So, that's where, where the first pitch will be. But then, July 18, city fire and city police will be playing against each other following the Muck Tugs game. So, it's going to be a great event.
Okay. You got the, you got the, you got the order. "Don't suck." I'm both of those. All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Matt or anyone else? Okay. Any unfinished business? Okay, item 53, Resolution 53, 2021. Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to support the submission, a Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Funding Application for Jackson Street.
Seconded by Ms. Christian. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Counsel member Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 54, 2021. Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 190 entitled "Zoning of the City of Batavia Municipal Code" to amend the zoning map of the city of Batavia and to schedule a public hearing.
Seconded by Ms. McGinnis. Any questions or concerns on that? Okay, call the roll, please.
Counsel member Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Resolution 55, 2021. Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the 2020 and 2021 Police Department Budget to reflect the receipt of a Stop DWI Grant in the amount of $32,981 to address the crimes of driving while intoxicated and/or driving under oil ability impaired by drugs.
Seconded by Ms. Christian. Any questions or concerns on that? Call the roll, please.
Counsel member McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 56, 2021. Mr. Canelli, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to amend the 2021, 2022 Police Department Budget to reflect the receipt of additional Stop DWI Grant funds in the amount of $2,400 to address the crimes of driving while intoxicated and/or driving while ability impaired by drugs during specified crackdown, high visibility periods.
Seconded by Mr. Karaz. Any questions or concerns on that? Call the roll, please.
Counsel member Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
And Resolution 57, 2021. Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to submit a New York Main Street Technical Assistance Grant Application.
Seconded by Mr. Byakowski. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Counsel member Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, please. Mr. Karaz, seconded by Mr. Canelli. Call the roll, please.
Counsel member Karaz?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Meetings adjourned.